Brad. Oh, we gotta go?
Okay, we'll call the May eighteenth.
June.
June eighteenth, meeting to order. Thanks.
Twenty twenty. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, invisible, liberty and justice.
Guess I better put my glasses on. Ed, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Teedman.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Snell.
Here.
Anytime motion for the approval of the minutes of the May twenty-eighth meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Snell.
Yes. Okay, we have four public hearings this evening. The format we follow for the public hearing will be allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at that location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded an opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against are afforded a similar opportunity. So with that in mind, you just permit to allow daycare center at ninety-three ninety-nine Minter Avenue. Is that applicant here, Larry?
I do not see that applicant.
Okay.
They could type a question in the Q and A section so we know they're there.
Okay, we'll give her a second or two. Okay, that's a couple of seconds, so let's move on. We'll table that one for the time being. Additionals permit to allow retail sales from a tent not associated with the principal use of the property at seventy-eight fifty Minter Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Once again, I do not see that applicant here either. If they're out there, please type in the Q and A section so we know you're there.
How about number three, Larry? Do you see that applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Additionals permit to allow a drive-through facility at seventy-seven eighty-seven Reynolds Road by Chipotle. Go ahead and tell us what you want to do at that location.
Good evening. This is Robert Abramovich from seven-seven-eight-seven Reynolds Investors. We own the former Bravo building, which Mission BBQ is currently a tenant. We also developed the Starbucks next door. The first proposal before you for a pickup window, I think we'll be talking about the second part of the meeting is exterior facade and site improvements, but is to add a pickup window with a drive-through lane to that building. It's like, let me just slide. So the pickup windows probably better shut on the elevations, but it's about the midpoint of the north side of the building that faces Sheets, right where Larry's hand was there. To do so, it would be eliminating approximately seven stalls in the rear and one in the front. The stalls on the north side along Sheets would be angled as shown, and we would provide a eighteen-foot one-way drive lane, which is the minimum one-way drive lane permitted by the code in the city of Minter. Larry, if you can scroll to the, maybe the elevation page, we can show a visual image of that size. The the from top to bottom here, the second elevation down, left to right, those are two existing windows. And the third, there's a good shot at it, but the, it's a pickup window. So Chipotle is going to a pickup, not a, so a traditional drive-through, you order at the rear of the building or on the side of the building, your order's prepared and you you pull through the Chipotle, or the drive-through lane and pick up your food. Chipotle is doing a pickup window, which is, you would order online or on your app, and you would go through the lane and pick up your food without exiting your car. So in addition to that, Larry, if you can scroll back to the site plan, there's two parking stalls that are dedicated just after the pickup window in the event that, and there's the two right there, Larry, where your hand is, that their order is not ready, they can pull through as to not back up traffic and wait in the Chipotle dedicated spaces as shown. That's all I have for the drive-through portion. Also with me on the call, if there's any questions, Daniel McDonald with Vokon, he's the landlord's architect. Matt Weber with Weber Civil Engineering, he's landlord's engineer. Julie Kortich, the design manager from Chipotle, and Denise Polk from Red Architecture, she is the architect for Chipotle.
So you got a full house?
I think so.
I'm thinking they're here.
So I only have Julie unmuted.
Okay. So there are two, there's two conditions under the CUP for the drive-through. You agree with those two provisions?
I'm scrolling, I'm getting to those. Hang on just a second.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment about that condition?
Sure.
Uh, Bob, under condition number two, the light pole location at the end of the drive lane, we've noted, based on what the site plan shows, it shows that it's has proposed paint striping. When you're actually out on, when you're actually out on site, it's in an island now. Um, we actually, we do have a photo of that, so I guess, just looking for you to clarify, is it gonna stay in the island or is the island being removed?
I talked to Mr. Decker yesterday about, about some of the comments, and we'll, we'll slide that into that island, into the middle of the island. So we will move that light pole, which was the second condition.
And get rid of those bollards.
And then the other condition, I'm gonna probably defer to Julie. Julie, condition number one, associated with the pickup window had to do with the clearance bar menu board and any directional signage that shall be finished painted to match the window and door framework.
You're gonna slide the light pole to the middle of what island?
So that, there's that striped island that, I can't move the cursor, but.
It separates the two lanes.
Yeah, we'll say north, three feet. I would say four feet would put it in the center of that island, and then I will work with.
You see the island north of that on the property line? Can you slide it to there?
Uh.
Get it out of the, just get it out of the flow of traffic altogether?
You could do that. We're gonna actually look at that, the hatched lane that is between the drive-through and the island that you're on, and potentially curbing that and landscaping it, and then we could, we could put that light there. I guess I would, I would say this, I would like to look at the photometrics and what kind of spread we get in one of the islands, but we will put it in a curved island, and so that it can't be hit by a vehicle, if that's fair.
Larry, those photos that I sent you or referred, can you pull those up? Cause there's actually a photo of this particular light pole.
Okay. I think it's cropped.
Oh, wow, I thought we had it. Okay.
I'm gonna look on this to make sure. I thought I had them all. There's a good shot on Google of it.
Well, you can see it actually in this picture here. It is, but it is in an island. We had some pictures taken just this.
Here. It's in the corner field.
Yeah, it's in the corner there. Can you pull it up on Google? Cause there's a shot of the lot on it.
We do have a picture of it.
That light pole?
Yep. I guess it's already in an island, and that was the question, was is that island going to stay? Are you redoing that completely?
Yeah, that, that lane comes right through there, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll move it and we'll put it in an island. I would just like to look at the photometrics and make sure we can get enough spread across the front. That's eliminating the storefront as well, probably over to, to or near the Sheets property line, so. But we don't have a problem moving.
You also referred to the architectural, the item number one, and I think the, the information that we received were just general Chipotle sign standards, but I don't, you know, it wasn't clear what was in the photos that we received was in fact what was being built for the site.
So Larry, can you scroll to, it's page four of the landlord design requirements? I don't know if you have it, it's some Chipotle. Yeah, so right, I think, right, there's, yeah, that's what you'd be looking at. Julie, if you're on, just real quick, the the existing storefront system, doors are a dark bronze anodized finish, so while some of the pictures that you see on this prototype of Chipotle have the gray, or charcoal gray finish, the existing storefront and door finishes at this location will remain, and they're a dark bronze anodized, so I'll defer to Julie on the color, but I think they're gonna be very close to this brown or dark brown color.
So actually, I mean, that is all, that's an option. What we would prefer to do, and what's closer to our trade dress, would be to actually match that, that field color of the brick on the elevations. I believe it's technically called knight's armor here, but it is closer to a charcoal color. You know, we're certainly open to matching the storefront if we absolutely have to, but if we could match the, the brick, that would also be, that would be preferable. But either way, we can certainly change the finish from the, what we have shown is a rusted, a rusted corten to, to match.
Questions? Well, I have other questions. The elevations they show us are not the ones that are being built.
Which, because we do have the three items.
Right.
This is still pertaining to the driver.
Right. Well, can I ask a question?
Yes.
We have this picture, I don't know if everyone can see it, it's the one that was in the set. It shows the corner, it shows a sidewalk, so the existing construction is gonna be altered. How, how close is the driveway actually gonna be to the face of the building? Cause that shows a sidewalk there.
For the driveway? I guess I'm not sure which side, which site plan you're referring to. Larry, may if you can scroll back to the site plan so we can.
And Larry, Jeff is, Mr. Varga is holding up the
They built it.
Up the photos that were provided.
Okay.
So the site plan shows the driveway right up against the face of the building?
Correct. Typically, we would install about an eight-inch or twelve-inch curb along the face of the building to protect the vehicle from hitting the building.
You have, you have a door that comes right out into that driving lane. What is the function of that door?
That's existing. If you look, go back to the elevations, that door's gonna be filled in. That's, that's existing condition. So if you go back to the elevation, that door, that door is gone.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the, all right. Let me ask this question.
Some of that.
Let me ask this question just as a preliminary. This, this photograph that we just had up, the, the elevations and the, the design of the building is gonna be based on what's on the drawings, the Vokon drawings. And not on what's built in the field right now.
That's correct. We're gonna, we're gonna walk through the modifications that we're gonna make to the building.
I just, I was getting confused a little bit because I was seeing different things in different places, where the, where this window was gonna be and how it was gonna work. But we'll, we'll move on.
All right, can you pull up the, the light pole slide? The one that shows the front of the building? At previous meeting, I asked the representative of the landlord about replacing those street trees that were out in front, and he assured me that those would be replaced. I don't see him being replaced. Is there a comment you can make?
If, if we were supposed to replace them and we didn't, I will make sure that they're done within the next thirty days.
He told, he told us at the previous meeting that he had just let the contract for those at that meeting, the same day as the meeting.
I, I know that we had a contract and we paid Lake Erie Shores, I believe it's called, or Lake Erie something to do it.
Mr. Chairman, where, where are the trees? Cause right now, obviously, there's a row of shrubs. Were the trees to be in place of the shrubs and shrubs removed?
No, I think they were a combination of both of them. The street trees went away. The street trees were out there, they cut them off and just filled it in with mulch.
Like maybe in those gaps there where there's, where there's, there's no bushes, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm not a landscape architect, so let's have John look at that and come up with an idea for that. And I think also at the dumpster site, now we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here, at the dumpster site, you have a couple of dead bushes in and around the dumpster.
We have a picture of that.
Tree there, there's the live.
It's up on the screen.
Okay.
There were a row of trees, then those trees went away.
We will, I'll make sure that they're replanted, and I will circle back with Larry and Kathy and provide pictures so that she can assure you that they were replanted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cook, so I know this is just a drive-through, but are, are we here, can we discuss the traffic pattern here, Kathy, or or is that in another agenda, four or five?
It's up to you. I mean, it's certainly applicable here.
Okay, so right now, you go through the drive-through at Chipotle, and you'll take a left turn, and you'll go across Mission BBQ. So to go northbound, you can only go northbound at that pork chop.
Correct.
You circle through, go to Tyler, take a right on Tyler, and then go, that's where you can go southbound on Reynolds. Well, the way it's set up now is all the traffic from Mission BBQ or Chipotle is gonna cross in front of Mission BBQ. So is there a way that we can relieve some of that traffic by, after you go through the drive-through of proposed Chipotle, can we do a right turn only in front of that, where you have the Chipotle spaces? So you can go northbound on Reynolds there, instead of taking all your traffic in front of Mission BBQ? Like a curb cut there? Because, you know, there was an issue with Starbucks. Now, there were Starbucks that were closed, and they were double stacking over here and really getting in the way of parking spaces for Mission BBQ. And my fear is, when you put a drive-through in here, you know, you're gonna impact their parking out front, cause you're constantly gonna have cars going past it. Now, if somebody wants to go, you know, south on Reynolds, they're gonna have to cross, they're gonna have to go in front of Mission. But anybody that wants to go north on Reynolds, instead of crossing Mission, they could go straight out the drive-through and then take a right turn only, northbound. That's something we thought about, or can we do a curb cut on Reynolds?
Mr. Cook, I, we talked about that at our, at our planning working group internally, and engineering, I don't believe will support that because right there at Sheets is a traffic light, so that curb cut would, would probably be too close in proximity to there.
Well, there's a left turn lane there. There's a middle lane that's a left turn only. And when I, when I was there today, it kinda looked like, you know, what I'm trying to do is, is not put all the traffic in front of Mission BBQ. All right, the Taco Bell rule. Yeah, I mean, should we, should we look at some sort of traffic study, or is there something?
If you wanna go, yeah, I mean, let's just, just think about this for a minute. If you wanna go, if you wanna get into this facility, you're coming south on, on Reynolds.
You have to go to Tyler.
You have to go to Tyler. The only entrance you can get into is, is all the way back in the southeast corner of this property at, with Tyler. You're going north on Reynolds, there's a one-way in, one-way out, you know, right in, right out. You still, then you have to work your way around the back.
Right, and there's no, there's no arrows on the asphalt there now, and there almost should be a sign there on that right, if you're northbound on Reynolds, you wanna go to Chipotle, you take a right turn in. There needs to be a sign there that says, you know, Chipotle Drive-Thru, you know, to rear or something.
Okay, and then you gotta work your way around the back.
You gotta go all the way around. So there has to be enough arrows there so people can get accustomed to this traffic pattern. And what I was trying to do was alleviate some of the traffic wrapping back around in front of Mission BBQ.
Even if you want to, you're leaving the drive-through for Chipotle, and you wanna go south on Reynolds, you still have to go all the way back around, get onto Tyler, and then come back to the intersection. It's, it's a lot of traffic.
But at least half the traffic wouldn't go in front of Mission if you, if you could go straight out and take a right turn.
I understand.
So you can't stop it all. Now, if you got, you know, six or seven cars stacked up there, the people that are in Mission, they're gonna have trouble backing out, because people are gonna be sitting there, trying to make that right turn on Reynolds. And there's, you know, the traffic is dense on Reynolds, so it's not like you can get six cars out in one crack.
So.
Seems like it could potentially be a log jam, especially at lunch hour, where people, what did you call it?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I can, I understand the problem with exiting there with shields right next to it. The, the stoplight.
Yeah.
You can't really exit in, you have to be a certain distance.
Ask the applicant, are there any, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, I guess as far as access to Reynolds or right now, that would be an engineering question that, that we'd have to work with the, the the city on. I know that there is, there is a drop right-hand turn just after our property into Sheets, so sometimes introducing people entering and people trying to move over could be is sometimes in, in the development or traffic world, a no-no. That drop right-hand turn lane starts right. It looks like, oh, that's a sidewalk. I'm sorry. I thought it dropped in, but.
I mean, it's, I get it, it's tough, but you know, we also gotta look out for an existing business that's there now, so.
Yeah. So there's, with respect to, the other question was directional signage, and I think if you go to the site plan, we do propose directional signage as soon as you come in off of Reynolds. And it was on the slide. It's in the island, the first island. Larry, if you can zoom in, at the southwest corner of Mission BBQ, there's a note. I think it's on this plan, in that island, wait, maybe the note's on another plan, but you can see it right there to the left of the sidewalk. That's a directional sign, and it's the same one that we, Julie, talked about, that was that the brown color on the directionals, and I think it says Chipotle Mobile Order Pickup, and has a straight or with an arrow, so it directs traffic as they enter off of Reynolds, back around the back of the building. Additionally, we could add signage as you're exiting the pickup lane and heading towards, let's say Starbucks, that directs southbound. So there's a, there's a stop sign right before the right, right out, right there, that we could, we could direct Reynolds Road to turn left there, so we can direct people. And additionally, we typically would add arrows onto the pavement here, when I know that there's some repaving and things that we need to do here, so.
Kathy, did you have a question?
One of the comments that the engineer, engineering department made was to provide appropriate one-way do-not-enter signage at the exit of the northly one-way drive aisle. So I'm assuming that is exactly where you were speaking of. So if you were to enter off of Reynolds Road, you could not cross over and head north into into that parking lot. You'd have to go around. So it does keep the flow of traffic from causing too much congestion right there. That was the, that is a requirement, not a recommendation, it is a requirement of the engineering department to provide that. So that will help, at least with the direction, there's gonna be a lot of signage that's gonna be necessary to make sure that that's clear, and the directional arrows on the pavement also, because that is, that is that is one-way traffic there in front of the Mission and Chipotle, correct?
No, one-way on the north side.
Only on the north side?
Yep.
Well, based on oh. Okay, so then maybe his signage recommendation is up for the.
I think it was at the end, yeah.
Well, you could do that. I mean, you could do that where you prevent people from entering in from Reynolds and heading into that parking lot, going around the building.
So someone from Mission BBQ's gonna circle the building, the park there?
Well, but there's parking lot right, there's parking right there. There's parking, where the shared parking is. So there's, or they can, yeah, circle around. I mean, it's a way to keep the traffic moving in one direction, just as an idea.
I mean, the applicant, have you explored the possibility of doing an easement with Sheets?
Um, no, we haven't. I know that typically or historically, they have some of the same product offerings that, that some of the tenants on our property do, and so that is usually typically the end of that conversation.
Well, I mean, it's, the question is.
I think we have a grade change. That's pretty significant. Go ahead.
We're talking about internal circulation. I don't think, you know, we're, but we're talking about a lot of traffic circling around these buildings. Is all the tenants happy with that? I mean, and they feel comfortable? I, I mean, I assume they do, because you're going ahead with this, but.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think when we talk about Chipotle and a pickup window, it's not a traditional drive-through where you have eight or ten or twelve cars stacking and ordering, and then then waiting five minutes for, for their food. You've got people who've ordered five or ten or fifteen or half an hour before, and just don't have the luxury or the convenience, or they have children, or they don't wanna get out of their car, it's raining, and they want to just stay in their car. They've already paid for it. They pull through the, through the pickup window and provide their name. They have their order ready, and then they're out, and they leave. So a, a traditional Taco Bell or McDonald's where you're, you're waiting because the guy in front of you hasn't ordered yet, or is taking a while to order, their food's not ready, it's, it's a different model and a different system. Go ahead.
Okay, let me ask a question, then. I, I think you just brought up something we weren't aware of, or maybe needs further clarification. So this, this pickup lane is only for pre-ordered food?
Yeah, Julie, can you confirm that?
Yes, it's for, you can't actually go and place an order there. You can place an order online or on the app to pick up from there.
So you have a mess, a menu board, so people will just drive up and order. So those people will still be waiting in line for their food, right? The people who order from the menu board?
We will, we don't have a, a menu board, per se. Once you order on the app, it will give you an estimated time to pull up to the window and pick up your order. Generally, we meet those, those times within a few minutes, and if not, for some reason, that's why we have the pull-ahead spaces.
So then, I, I, again, this is for all pre-ordered food? No one pulls off the street and pulls into the lane and orders something, unless they've used the app? It's all.
Correct. There's, there's no menu board.
All right. That, that does then suggest there'll be less queuing up in the, yeah, at least for this, for this drive-through.
Additional drive-through.
It's actually, and, and going to free up parking for people who would have normally parked and gone in and got their food, they can now go through the drive-through or the pickup lane, not have to park and take up parking spaces, so it will free up additional parking within the lot.
Well, I have, I have a question for Julie. Julie, did you agree that you're gonna paint the windows and doors to match the paint on the menu board and directional signage?
Uh, yes, we were going to try to coordinate both the patio railing and the clearance bar, et cetera, to, to match each other, and then I guess what I said earlier was, we would. we would prefer to try to match the, the color of the brick, uh, that will be shown on the elevations, which is our, one of our trade dress colors. Um, but, you know, if necessary, um, we, we can alter that to, to match the storefront, the existing storefront window. It's kind, it's kind of tough because it's an existing color that we would have to match. Whereas the color we're painting is one of our trade dress colors.
Kathy, does that satisfy you, if they match it?
Just, just to, just to confirm, so the color matching is going to be with this knight's armor color and not the bronze color that was previously suggested?
This is...
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we want to move on to the, uh, outdoor dining? We have to vote separately on each of these things.
We need to have a public portion.
Yeah.
We need to have a public portion for each set. We haven't had a public portion for item number three.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to speak against? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
I do not see anyone out there.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. I'll entertain a motion. Two conditions.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
Second?
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisera?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hatten?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Okay, now we've got a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drink at 7787 Reynolds Road. Assuming that you're going to speak on behalf of that.
Yes, um, the, Larry's got the site plan open here. Um, I think along the storefront here, Larry, if you can zoom in maybe a little bit on that, so we could, there you go, so approximately eleven and a half feet by, um, I'd say two-thirds of the front edge that you see there, we are showing the, uh, Chipotle fence, that was the, one of the original patio areas for the Bravo. They had one on each side of the, um, the building, the knee walls have since been removed. The brick pavers that were uneven and, um, were, were damaged have been removed. We will pour back a new concrete patio. Um, Chipotle will, uh, install the decorative fence that Julie mentioned a few minutes ago, along with a vehicle impact or protection device via ballards, meeting the city's requirements. Uh, they do have seating for approximately 24 seasonal, and that was shown on a floor plan. I don't know, Larry, if you're able to pull that up?
Yes, I can, it's got to find it.
Okay.
So you don't have a problem with storing that furniture off-site in the winter?
Julie can speak to this, but here's the floor plan, they have, um, two, I think one or two closets within the space that they could store inside. Julie, you still there?
Yes, sorry, that, that is correct. Um, we have mod, we've modified the, the layout slightly from here, but we still maintain a, a large storage area in the back of house, which if you scroll up a little bit on that PDF, you can see, um, yeah, it should be right there next to that little office, uh, over to the right. Yep, right there. Uh, and that, that's, uh, plenty of space to store, uh, both the umbrellas and the, um, the patio furniture.
Thanks. Any questions relative to this? CUP. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions?
Second. Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hatten?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Okay, item five on a new business. Architecture review of a restaurant at 7787 Reynolds Road. Right ahead.
Okay, Larry, if you can go back to the, uh, color elevations, I think we talked about the drive-through. Um, so these are the, the elevations that we worked with Chipotle and Vocon on. Uh, I want to highlight, I guess I'll walk through the changes. Um, and I, I know we looked at some pictures, um, of the existing conditions today, but I want to walk through the changes that are proposed to the Chipotle side, the Mission Barbecue side is existing, is, is shown in, um, a little bit of a grayscale here, but, um, on the building, we've raised the feature uh, at the main entry, which is the one in the middle, uh, to be the same height as the one on the north and the one on the, the south end, which is the Mission Barbecue. So that, that feature today is maybe four or five feet shorter, and we've raised it um, so that it can be an architectural entry feature, and then it matches, uh, the other features on the other two corners of the building. Um, on the north side, uh, which is the second elevation down, we extended and wrapped that harley plank, so right now it, it ends at probably that first window, and I think that was one of the pictures that we were looking at earlier. So we've extended it to include the drive-through window, so that we can have, and Chipotle's preference there is to have a, make that a feature, an architectural feature, so we've wrapped it and included it. The drive-through window, I think we talked about the man door that is also on that side of the building, um, and it's shown in note A7 or A2. Um, right in the middle between the drive-through and the next window there, uh, will be filled in. Um, that's right there, Larry, that's where that was just, uh... Um, regarding the colors, uh, we work closely with Chipotle to incorporate stain colors that complement the Chipotle brand as well as immediately adjacent tenant, Mission Barbecue. So the, the existing storefront and windows will remain as currently installed in a dark bronze anodized color. Any existing two-way windows that look into the kitchen or the back of the house will be replaced with spandrel glass, so um, the two windows to the left of your, there you go, those two, um, Larry, would be currently today, they're two-glass, they would be replaced with spandrel glass. And then the two on the back of the building that, that are almost identical to these, that face, um...
East.
Yeah, the, I guess the Sheetz car wash, there they are, those would be, those are back of the house, those would be replaced. The glass only would be replaced with spandrel glass. Um... Uh, with respect to the colors, um, there should be, so the dark color is the color that, um, that Julie had mentioned, it's a knight's armor, and then the lighter color that you're seeing is what's a fog, and these are trademark dress colors that Chipotle uses, and Larry, I don't know if you have, we submitted, uh, some color swatches or samples. I don't know if you're able to pick those up, or if they show well. So those are the, um, samples, they may not show well on a photo, um, but the knight's armor is a charcoal gray, and then the fog is, um, probably between a wheat and ivory. If we go back to the elevation, uh, we introduced some decorative moldings at the, um, where the brick and the harley plank meet, uh, to, to transition those materials. Uh, on the awnings on the building, um, combination of decorative fabric awnings and light gauge metal knife-type, um, flat awning, so they're shown on both the north and the west elevations. The light gauge night fongings are traditionally utilized above windows and, or doors where Chipotle will propose future building signage, so with the main entry feature, the one in the middle, there, there's a, an awning there, um, just above the transom. Uh, and sometime in the future, Chipotle will, um, prepare signage drawings to hopefully incorporate some signage above that entry. And then on the drive-through side, um, same thing, we've gone with two uh, knife-type awnings above those, both the drive-through window and then the, um, full-height windows, well. The other awnings that you see are a black fabric decorative awning. We've kept, uh, a very similar pitch to, um, try to complement what was done at Mission Barbecue. Um, and those are shown both on the north and on the west elevations. Uh, we continued with the gooseneck lighting that was a, a trade dress at Mission Barbecue above their awning, so we've continued those along the Reynolds-facing elevation, and you see those above the three windows as shown. Let's see. I think that's, um, all I have on the, on the elevations as far as the building's concerned. Some of the materials and color samples, um, and call-outs are shown on the left side of this elevation, color elevation, and um, I think we can answer any questions that you have regarding the changes to the building.
Mr. Sh, any questions for the applicant?
I have one, the, uh, garbage in the back, you share it with Mission Barbecue, right?
Correct.
Well, the doors have seen better days, to say the least, and I'd like to see the doors replaced and, and have the, uh, spring-loaded mechanism that keeps them closed. I was there today, and they're, it's, it's just, it needs replaced at this point. Is that something we can put in as a condition?
Yeah, I know that, yeah, I know, at the time that we, and I don't, is that a picture of them? I know that they got new boards on them when we did the Mission Barbecue, and because we were working with a couple of different tenants and didn't know if this trash enclosure was going to remain in its current location or if it was going to be relocated, depending on who the tenant, the co-tenant was, yeah, we can, um, we'll certainly want to spruce that up and clean it up, as, as there'll be, um, more traffic that'll be, um, viewing it and, um, accessing it, so yes, that's no problem.
And I can't stress enough the spring-loaded mechanism to keep them closed.
Um, yes, we can look into that, I'm not familiar with that, but we can, um, we can include that.
And don't forget the landscaping.
Got the landscaping. You want me to, okay, if you want to go back to the site plan? Let's touch on, so we, um, and I know you, you mentioned the trees in the front, we will get, um, I'll make sure that those get taken care of, but then also we've included as you, um, traverse through the, I guess, the pickup lane on, on your left-hand side where the clearance bar and some of the directional signage is, we're showing a proposed plant bed, and then there's, um, the grass in the back area, and everything needs to be replanted and, or reseeded or re-sotted, so um, we will take care of that as well.
Okay, I just, uh, let me just ask one question for clarification purposes on the elevations. So the lighter color is a plank, it's a pre-finished plank material? For the, the, the kind of towers on the corners?
Yeah, some of it, a lot of it's existing, um, so we're extending the main, the one in the middle, up about three or four feet. And then if you look on the left side, the other one, maybe we're extending towards the east, maybe, um, and then we're changing, kind of flipping the colors that you see in this picture, so that the, the main entry features is, will go from the darker to the lighter, and the brick will go from a lighter stain to a darker stain.
So, and that's, and I just want to clarify for everyone's understanding too, that the dark brown that we see on the elevation is ma, is brick masonry that you're staining?
Yes, sir. It stains presently, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Your chairman? Uh, to Mr. Varga's point earlier, you do show a proposed menu board, so I'm assuming that will not be shown on the final site plan?
Um, can you go back? I don't, Julie, is that, was that all that we pulled off of, and all, or is it just a welcome board, or does it go away?
Um, I, I, I believe that, that, um, if it says menu board, that was a, a very early iteration of what used to be our, our digital, uh, pickup package. Um, so if it's not a directional signage, which we have at the front, at that right-in, right-out, um, it, it will not be, it will not be needed there. Sorry, that was a long way to say that, no, you can take it out.
And then going back to the proposed paint striping between the two lanes there on the north, the drive-through exit, I guess, uh, if you do put a, um, a raised curb there, if you put your light pole in there, are you going to provide a sidewalk or something for the people to, uh, walk from the north property line into the restaurant?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, the other part of that is, do you want to be inviting people to be crossing through that lane where people are driving through? Yes, if that's the desire of the city.
I'd do it, yeah. If they park on the north side, they're going to probably do that anyway.
Yeah. Yes. We can just turn it down and provide a crosswalk through there and a sidewalk through.
Well, so there's no, there's no access on the north side of the building, right, so they have to come to the front?
Yeah, so they have to walk around, and they have to walk around to the sidewalk between the patio and the parking, the pickup, the parking. So, yeah, they're going to have to cross that island. That's how they're going to get to the front.
So they'd have to come here and go there?
So you're going to need to add the, you know, pedestrian crossing uh, signage or something there, because it, they will walk to get to the sidewalk that's adjacent to the patio to get to the front door. They'll have to cut right across your pickup lane. So you should stripe that as a crossing and put some signage up. Yeah, that is a condition.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, that's easy.
You understand what I mean, if you just extended that sidewalk over that island, in a sense?
Or, or we turn down the curbs on either side and you have a...
Something, sort of, because that's where people are going to walk, whether you want them to or not.
Yep. Yeah, that's fine. We will show that in detail. And then we can have signage, um, that, for the people coming through the pickup lane that, that denotes that there's pedestrian crossing.
For the purposes of the, of the record, we recommend the correct verbiage for this condition. I would suggest provide pedestrian crossing from north side of building, sidewalk in front of the patio, does that work?
With proper signage?
Pedestrian striping across pickup lane.
People are going to walk back that way. Right in front of cars.
Anything else, fellas?
Um, real quick, two, two things, um, Julie reminded me that they may, on those spandrel windows that, um, that I mentioned, there's two on the north side and two on the east elevation, that they may want to introduce on the top portion of that some kind of film, um, um, over the glass, so they can introduce some natural light into the back of the house or into the kitchen. Julie, do you want to expand on that?
Um, yeah, and I, and I apologize for, uh, it, it being such a, a late conversation. Um, yeah, we did want to, it, it's pretty dark back in that area, and, uh, any amount of natural light helps. We figured if we have the windows there, um, that it would be advantageous if we could do some sort of a frosted, solid color, uh, translucent film, rather than a solid black spandrel panel.
Kathy, do you have a problem?
I'm going to defer to our local architect.
Thank you very much. Uh, why don't you just make it a window, a window, window?
Well, there are certain elements of back-of-house conditions that, uh, might be a little bit messy, um, so uh, and also we have, um, an office back there where you could potentially, you know, see into, where we have a safe, um, you know, things like that. Um, so, uh, yeah, translucent film helps, you know, keep people from seeing inside, but we're still getting that, uh, diffuse light.
So you're, you're putting the film on glass? So it'll be glazed, and you put film on the glass so that it's not, it'll be translucent, not transparent?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, that's not, and it'll look like the regular win, it'll look like the windows. The normal, all right, that's fine.
And then, I had one other comment or question about, um, the, can, one of the conditions, um, and I talked to Mr. Decker yesterday, uh, I think item number three, existing parking lot serving all three tenants shall be repaired, surface matic curb installed, and I told him that we, we, there's improvements that need to be made behind, uh, this building, and then on the, what will be the, the future Chipotle side, and, and we agreed that, um, we did need to do that additionally. I think at Starbucks, we had, um, repaved most, if not all, that lot, and a lot... I think at Starbucks we had repaved most, if not all, that lot and a lot of Mission BBQ side, but I acknowledged with him that those improvements did need to be made and that I would work with him and his staff to ensure that those get done.
Mr. Chairman, we also went out on the staff and took some photos. I think you saw Larry went through those pretty quickly before, but we did note that they had made some improvements. There is some areas like this that still need to be improved, but there are areas, you can see where that sidewalk area has been repaved, and so we definitely note that there have been, and some of the curbing has been repaired, but some still needs to be repaired. There's some broken curbing still in the back.
Yeah, we're going to get rid of all that deck curbing. It's, it doesn't work anywhere, especially in Menter when there's two or three feet of snow on the ground.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions. Number five, replace garbage bin door and install a spring-loaded mechanism to keep the doors closed, and number six, sidewalk, pedestrian sidewalk through whatever Kathy said.
Number seven, landscaping.
Oh, yes. Number seven, crush it, uh, street trees and landscaping in rear. Street trees along Reynolds, landscaping in rear.
Do we have to call out the menu board being removed too?
No. No, you don't have any intention of doing that.
Okay.
That's fine. It's, that was, uh, in second?
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Number one and number two here yet?
Anita is here.
Let's go back to that conditional use to allow a child daycare center at 9397 and 9399 Menter Avenue. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Anita, go ahead.
Good evening. We're trying to propose to move into the empty unit that is located in our plaza currently to make additional room for the usage of school-aged children.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is anyone wishing to speak against?
I did not see anyone wishing to speak either in favor or against this one.
Thank you, Larry. So we'll close the public portion. Entertainer questions of the commission for the applicant or the administration.
I have an initial question.
Right ahead.
Uh, to the applicant, is this going to be a permanent facility or is this just temporary?
This is temporary for the pandemic. As of right now, we have agreed on a six-month lease with the landlord and it would be going six months to six months.
Okay.
Kathy, well, let me ask you this. When do we have to do it in a six-month period, anything?
What do we have to do?
Yeah. She says it's a six-month deal. Mr. Miller, anything?
There shouldn't be any reason to do that. They just, it'll obviously go quicker to expire after a year. No problem with it done by then.
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
It was not a question, I just wanted to clarify on the lease agreement because right now we do not know as to what's going on with the school-aged children and our capacity has been cut from 18 to nine, and we don't know what's going to happen once the schools reopen. Right now they're looking at just to having children attend part-time and then do homeschooling, so we'll still be providing care. So we would be occupying month to month with a six-month notice to our tenant that we are moving on, basically.
So we clarified, the conditional use permit allows the use to go forward. If that stops after six months, whoever comes in next would have to get another, whatever is required for that, for that particular use. The, what you're looking at is we have a lot of projects that haven't been finished that expires after a year, and it wouldn't.
Mr. Chairman, any questions for the administration or the applicant?
I have an addition, some additional, just an additional question. Are you making any improvements to the interior of the space that's not already there? I see restrooms and kitchen and an office. Are those already in place or are those being built now?
So, yeah, uh, we're not doing any improvement, taking a...
Sorry, we didn't catch any of you.
Anita, you're breaking up.
Kids in groups of nine.
Okay, we didn't get much of what your response was. The question is, is the improvements that are shown, or the spaces that are shown on the floor plan that you presented, are those existing, all existing, or are you building any of those new?
They...
We're not, we're not getting...
They are all existing.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Two conditions. Yes.
One other comment for the applicant. How will you be taking the children from that space to the outdoor play area? Will they be going from the back or the front of the building?
Didn't hear you. They will be going to the back of the building.
The back of the building, Houston.
Back of the building.
Will be going to the back of the building.
Aren't there cars that go in the back of the building?
There are, it's the UPS truck, um, the waste management, they come to pick up the waste, those usually are finished before 6:00 AM in the morning.
What, what, what would keep you from, from moving the children, the, the open spaces at the north end by your existing facility, right? Wouldn't it be safer if you just walked them on the sidewalk across the front of the building?
Uh, to the area.
We didn't hear any of that. Try again.
Um, we do not have, we do not oppose walking them in up front, it is just quicker for them to walk through the back of the building.
Now, I don't, I mean, in my opinion, and I see another opinion, I think it would be safer to keep them on the pedestrian sidewalk in front of the building rather than walking them into, along a service drive with people driving from, you know...
I'm on board with that.
Okay, so we would, I would want to restrict you to keep the children only on the pedestrian walkway in the front of the building.
Okay, that is fine, we can do that.
All right.
And is it new, is this new facility equipped with an AED device?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is this, is this building equipped with an AED device?
Anita, are you there?
Larry, what happened?
She's still there. We just can't hear her.
She's... She's not muted or anything.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Want to make that a condition?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's make it a condition.
Four conditions. Yes, on the, on the...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion with four conditions.
Number three being the AED device and four being the children walk on the pedestrian walkway to get to the playground.
Mm-hmm. I second it.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Gary, number two, is he here?
I do not see him here. We do have a question though from Chipotle wanting some clarification on their approval.
What's the clarification?
Um, they wanted to know if it's acceptable, this clarification on, if it's acceptable for the clearance bar and the patio railing to match the gray armor, brick stain.
Brick stain.
So they want to go with the darker color.
Sure, darker color is always safe.
Okay, I think that's what they wanted. Julie, did you get that?
Yes. So Mr. Dellis is not here.
Should we table?
No, he is not.
Okay.
Is that set for?
We're not going to have a meeting between now and when he wanted to do this, so. Table it.
Motion to table, second.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Now, so I plan of a multi-tenant senior independent living and assisted living facility at 8180 and 8190 Menter Hills Drive.
Okay, Gary, you, and Matthew, you are both unmuted.
Okay, so, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is Gary Viallis with, you're ready? So this is, I've been in front of you before, preliminary site plan approval. I agree the notes, the staff report, I agree with all the notes. Is one, one of you going to walk, walk through the same plan or what was proposed?
Go ahead and walk through it.
Okay, as we, for this building, it consists of independent living.
Gary, can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry.
Yeah.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This building consists of independent living, a three-story building, along with and assisted living, which is also a three-story building. If you look at the plan that's up, the building to the left, which has a square footage, that one, Larry, is the independent building, living building. It, again, it's three stories, there's a front entrance, drop-off canopy in the front. It contains, there's, it contains, uh, as well as our dining area, swimming pool, exercise, it has a lot of community features. The building next to it, which is our memory care, a split living building, it's up to three stories. There is a, there is a, memory care is on the first floor. When you enter the building, there's also a drop-off for this building, I think. You come into the building and you are assisted living, and you go to left if you enter.
You have a court reporter on there?
Pardon?
You have a court reporter with you?
No, that's Larry, he needs to mute himself.
Maybe you had a piano player with you.
Okay, that's much better, thank you. Okay, so in, the memory care is on the first floor. As you walk in the building, you will talk, and that's more of a locked-out restricted area to go, so you'll pass a desk and they will let you into memory care. There are two elevators in that building, you go up to the second, third floor, which are the assisted living units. Both these air buildings, or both these, both uses have outdoor areas for the community to go into. They're separated and the memory care one is fenced, so it is, as you look through this plan, there are a lot of areas that are showing us detention times. Those will all have fountains in them and they're, they're needed for the... There's parking along the front of the building as well as parking behind the building.
Gary, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Under proposed conditions, number eight says, the details of the covered parking area should be provided as part of the building from an application. What do you see as the covered parking?
The, the plan for that, it would be covered and it'd be garages, actually, individual garage.
And building materials will be comparable to the building?
Exactly, yeah, and I'll submit that. I'm sorry for not doing, but yes.
Those are for permanent residents presumably, correct?
Oh, yes, they're for the, they're for the residents. They actually have to reserve them and there is a fee for reserving one.
And, and those are in the southeast corner of the site plan?
Uh, am I, yeah.
Gary, can you blow that up?
Yes, you blow it, yeah.
Yes, southeast corner.
Yes. Okay, is there anything, I mean, we have other amenities, if you can see, we have an outdoor patio for independent living and pickleball and the cutting green, those are all features we have, and we also have a covered pavilion also in that back area that the, someone can serve dinner out there and have a hookout.
Mr. Chairman, you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
You've, you've shown us as part of the package, two architectural renderings?
Yes.
One showing the entry canopy and the other one showing the long, the, I guess that would be the north elevation of the building?
Correct.
Are those accurate?
Actually, we're building this right now, it's not to that point, but those are accurate.
So the materials, the colors, we can depend on this rendering as, as accurate for your architectural proposal?
Yes, I spent a lot of money to get an accurate render.
Helps us, it helps us too, to be able to...
This, we're, we really do want to impress people when they drive up to our community, and I think this is impressive.
Gary, do you have any problem with the nine stipulations under nine conditions? Four conditions?
I think I did, I'll look at them again.
Real quick. Yes.
Gary, would you expand on, I know there were some questions with regard to the Garfield Road access, and I know that's going to come up with the Villas as well. There were some questions on the plans that you provided with regard to the, the improved materials for that road and how that's coming along in terms of, I know you've had some issues with the easements over there. Can you just talk about that a little bit? And also the access is, is where, when that road comes in from Garfield and that enters down, just provide some clarification, are you going to need an easement on that other site?
There, there, and I think I've submitted this one time to Larry, there is quite a few easements. Um, all along the front of the property, along 90 is an easement. Right now, it's going all the way from, I guess it's the City's Road to the, okay, thanks, Larry. This is the easement, every, the City's, those are easements, okay? There is an easement, and this was from a vet who used to own the property, from Garfield Road, and it comes in curved, just like I show it, and then you come down at a, you know, go, it's, will go south, and, and then...
We just want to ensure that it's going to be improved.
Yeah, it's going to be a paved road. I think there was a stipulation maybe, but yeah, it would be a 24-foot-wide asphalt road that would be able to handle a, I'm not sure if it was yours or not, 70,000-pound fire truck, I couldn't ask for. But yeah, it would be a paved road. It will not just be for fire trucks probably, it will also be our second access point into our community. People like to come to that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just have one clarification. You presented some documents here that show the floor plans individually?
Yes.
And elevations and such, and I just want to bring to your attention, and maybe to the city's attention, that all the references to direction, north, it's all, they're all wrong. So, I didn't actually read that in the conditions. Okay, very good. So that just needs to be corrected on any final documents submitted to the city.
Take your help.
There you go.
Yeah, Gary, that required a lot of extra thought on our part.
Well, I didn't catch it, so I feel bad that I didn't catch.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Got a motion?
Motion, oh yeah, motion. Motion to approve with ten conditions, attempt being a 24-foot asphalt road from Garfield. Width, 24-foot width.
Width.
Second. Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Gary, final site plan of the senior independent living villas at Manor Hills Drive.
Okay, on this plan, it's, again, it's the villas that actually support in a way on our, for your stand, there'll be a lot of individuals that are not, they're still at the age, they still want to have a private, I didn't say, is a...
That's a clubhouse.
Can't hear you, Gary.
It's a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, and they're different, you know, there's some are two, some are five, some are four. They all really look alike, I just want to be honest with you. The one, I didn't submit every foot floor plan, but it, the way it works, it's an accessory to the building. As you can see, some of the units do have two-car garage versus one-car garage. As we were building these, just to let you know, would, would break the entire site and put utilities in, we would not build these, because they're going to probably go anywhere from three to four stations before we would be supposed to be building. And on this plan, you'll see, and we're finalizing negotiations with Heartland regarding the fire access that the fire department requested. Now, Heartland has requested that they, at their property line, they want a fence, because they don't want people using this access only for fire, okay? And we would put a fence on our gate, let's say, some kind of decorative gate, on our side also, because we don't want people driving down a road to go to that end. So that is a stipulation by Heartland, they don't use the access point, but only for emergency.
Gary, any comments?
Yeah, I know, that was one of Chief Searle's preferences, he really wanted to see this emergency access, so I know that Gary's been working on it, make that happen. So we're pleased with how he's proposing it.
Well, just to let you know, Heartland is very happy that we're here, because we're not a competitive use. We will actually provide, unfortunately, provide them with more residences along the way.
Let me ask you a question about this driveway with, for fire access. If there's going to be two different gates, has the fire marshal signed off on the fact that he'd have to open up or unlock two different sets of gates to get from, to be able to use this access?
I know they're okay with the gate access, they haven't indicated they had any concerns with the number of gates that were proposed, and I know they're still working through it, so they won't sign off on this until they're satisfied with how it's presented.
Another option, if they aren't happy with it, I could put some big signs from our properties that do not enter. Doesn't mean people shouldn't enter, but I can definitely have big signs do not enter.
What is your proposed 20-foot emergency access road made up?
Oh, it will be asphalt. I know that it's cross-edged, but it will be asphalt. They'll be coming through an asphalt road as it is, just to know, to Heartland.
You're going to have an asphalt road in between 36 and 37.
Correct, yes.
Any additional questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with seven conditions.
Second.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Gary, it's taken forever.
Forever, but it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Gary, we want to be invited to the grand opening.
We get complimentary rooms, don't we? We get complimentary rooms, don't we, for down the road?
I think my speeder cut off there, I deserve it.
Thank you, this is only going to take about a half hour.
Excuse me, I gotta leave the room for a minute.
I just wanted to introduce, this will be formally discussed, as long as you are agreeable to at the, at the next meeting, it'll be an agenda item for your review and recommendation. As you know, we have been discussing and going back and forth, some of you for years on this issue of outdoor storage and display, and this has been an item of interest for council as well. And a couple members of council last year had asked our law director to look into this to some extent, and he did, and then he passed it on to the administration. And we've spent a considerable amount of time researching this particular topic to get it to where we think will be a good working document with the proposals that we've seen. I know in my short time here, but also collectively over the years, with some of the proposals, not only with storage, but displays, also collection bins, and we want to address a new popular item that I don't think is going to go away, but these lockers that are being presented and proposed by the likes of UPS and Amazon. We've been receiving a lot of requests for these, so I forwarded this information to you just to give you a head start on looking at it, and we'll go into more detail with it at the next meeting, and there's some supplementary definitions that support it. And as with any zoning text change, it goes, kind of have the domino effect, so we had an additional change to the beginning of this chapter, which is after 1161, but we'll talk about it in more depth at the next meeting.
Just out of curiosity, anything ever shake with that bin that was supposed to go on a Lowe's property?
Yes, the, well, the brick wall was completed on the Lowe's property. There's been some delays with the Home Depot property, but we've actually been in touch with them last month, and it shouldn't come as a surprise, but there was another change in management, so we kind of had to reintroduce what was approved last year, and that's getting, that's... But the Lowe's brick wall is in compliance with what was proposed last year, so that should now cover the mulcher area.
Anything else, fellas?
Kathy, what's the problem with the current language? It's pretty stringent that we're striking out, so what does the new language offer that the current one doesn't?
Well, it just goes into more detail, the current language, it's about a paragraph long, and it says that, you know, it talks about if there's something that's being proposed within the front setback of the building, it has to be approved per development. We've gone in and explained in more detail the different types of scenarios that we encounter and that we get proposed on with regard to outdoor display and how we want to see these displayed. I guess the best example is the latest proposal we received from Petiti. We don't just want a temporary makeshift display area, they've now created a permanent, expanded outdoor storage area with proper screening that will be there year-round, and that's what we want to see. So, you know, when you read this, like, you know, page three talks about those areas, we want to see a permanent screen. We don't want them to just throw mulch bags out outside for a period of time so that we have to wrestle with it for three months every year. We want to see something that they acknowledge is a, you know, a permanent part of their site, that if they need it to be dedicated, then they need to properly screen to offer it. So that's, that was what would be the attempt to be made here, is to better outline, and so there's no, it's hopefully going to take out the guesswork when somebody comes to you guys, that, look, you've got to do A, B, and C in order to do this type of storage. If you don't, then it's not meeting the code. And if they don't meet the code, then their only other option is to vary it. So it, again, it creates more guidelines for both the applicant and the administration and the, when you receive an application.
Because now they would get a code violation, and if they were going to do any of the structural work, they'd have to come through planning, review of it, and that's still all going to happen anyway, right?
It's going to happen, but now it gives guidelines. Now it's telling them...
It's more of a guide of what you need to build. You still need to build it.
Right.
And store, and, you know, you know what I'm talking about. We've had these issues.
Right.
You reminded me of, when you mentioned Petiti's, they did do that, what we asked them to do. However, the last time I was there, they had a bunch of mulch and big containers of dirt bags, I don't know, it was all stacked on the south outside of the fence.
They're not done yet.
Oh, so maybe that, maybe that's the reason, okay. But there was a substantial amount of product outside the fence.
entertain a motion to adjourn.